Just give me a second. Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the special virtual meeting, tentative budget hearing, City of West Miami. Today is Tuesday, September the 8th, and it is 5:05 PM. Madam Clerk, if you will read the instructions on how to join this meeting with Zoom video conferencing.
Next, a machine will ask you for the meeting ID, which you type 325-523-6059, followed by a pound sign, wait a few minutes, and the host will accept and give you access to the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's go ahead and do, let's do the roll call and the pledge, and then we'll take a break, Madam Manager. And, okay, so, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, roll called, Mayor Roger Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Commissioner Candida Blanca. Present. Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Present. And Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Quintana is attempting to get him connected, so, once he's connected, please let everyone know that he is present in the meeting, but for right now, he's not able to connect. Uh, thank you. Oh, and there he is, there he is, he's connecting, let's give him a second. He's connecting to audio.
We're not live yet, are we live yet?
Yes, sir, we are live, the meeting is in session. And Commissioner Suarez is connecting to audio, so I'm gonna give it one moment. Actually, let's go on to the Pledge of Allegiance, Madam Clerk, while he's connecting. Major Delgado, would you do me the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, for the record, Commissioner Suarez has joined the meeting. Welcome, Commissioner Suarez.
Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Suarez.
Thank you.
And Mr. Q, thank you for your assistance with that matter. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Item three, public comments.
Has anyone registered, called in, or wishes to participate in the meeting, Madam Clerk, from the public?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, next item?
Item four, special items. For A, report by the Office of the City Manager in reference to Need Streets Grant and Line.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Commission. The City of West Miami, as part of the ongoing Tree City USA designation, was awarded a contract during this fiscal year. However, two things prevented us from moving forward with this grant. Number one is we did not see the revenue in last year's budget or the expense for the project, because the grant came in during the fiscal year after the budget had been adopted. Secondly, COVID impeded us from moving forward with this project. So, Mr. Ruano, our grant writer, went to the county and asked for an extension of the grant, which has been awarded now to the city pending approval from this commission for the project that will take us to the implementation of the shaded walk-to-school project to be completed by November 16, 2020. So, there are two things that we need to contemplate this evening. Number one, I would like for you to give us, if you're, if you're inclined to approving the project as part of your tentative budget, then we need the green light to go ahead and accept and authorize me to sign the extension of the tree planting agreement and include that as part of your decision in the tentative budget, and you will see it in your final budget hearing as well. So, that would be the first order of business so that we can proceed in working towards meeting the goal of this grant, which now the deadline becomes November 16. That being said, we have an open contract with Higgins Landscapers, and we have been back and forth, I'm sure you've seen emails issued by this office to Mr. Penna regarding, and Mr. Villalobos regarding the Richard Higgins contract. We want to make sure that he will honor the prices under the contract correctly, Mr. Penna and Mr. Villalobos, so far, so good. And he has agreed to honor those prices, Mr. Penna? I can't hear you.
Is she in a set, yes?
Yes, he has.
Thank you. Now, that being said, in the grant, there are amounts that are not corresponding to the proposal for the purchase of the trees as stipulated by the grant, by the contract between Mr. Higgins and the City of West Miami. So, Mr. Ruano is gonna go back and rework the numbers to either delete some trees or include additional trees in that general vicinity, because it is part of a project for walking the children to school in a shaded environment, pretty much. So, that's what we're gonna be working with now to tweak that budget with the county, and if you authorize me to sign that extension.
Are there any questions or comments to staff in reference to this item from the table? Okay, upon seeing no questions or comments, Madam Manager, do you just need an all-in-favor from us? Or we don't need a vote, correct?
No.
Okay, is there anyone opposed to giving the City Manager the authorization to proceed? Anyone opposed? Upon seeing no opposition, Madam Manager, you have our authorization to proceed.
Thank you very much, all right. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, this is the tentative budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, submittal. And the first item for that is Item B, which is the resolution, but usually is the City Manager who transmits the budget, the budget message, so, Madam Manager.
Madam Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission. I respectfully submit to you a tentative budget memorandum, which was issued by this office on September 1st, that includes the changes and the revisions made as we announced on July 15th. Some things occur pretty much at the 11th hour, as they say, and during the month of August, we take the opportunity to hear back from our insurance carriers, from our workers' compensation carriers, from the CITT on the projections made by their actuary on the expectation of revenues. And so, we try to fine-tune our budget to the best of our ability so that we can live as close as possible to the parameters of this, of the, of all our budgets, all our city budgets. So, we have done so, and we have provided you with some changes. Before we start, I'd like to let the record reflect that all the changes are highlighted in yellow in your budget. And for your reference, we have left the preliminary budget page in the back of the revised page, and you will find that page folded. That way, you can come back and do an analysis, Madam Mayor, as the question that you posed to me today. You were reviewing the preliminary budget against the tentative budget. That's why it's left there, because I feel that it's helpful to everybody to navigate through the, through the changes. So, they're all highlighted in yellow. I think that that covers what is pretty much the presentation of the budget. To my left here today is Mercedes Leon, our Finance Director, who has already made us aware of the fact that she is planned to step down and retire completely sometime in March of next year, could be early, could be mid or late March, depending on the progress that the city makes in finding a replacement, which I believe is going to be very difficult. And sometimes, I feel it may be impossible to replace somebody who walks out the door with 37 years of integrity, honesty, and, you know, undisputable love for the city. So, it's going to be, her shoes are going to be very difficult to fill, but one that is before us now as we move forward into the new fiscal year. Luli has decided that she wants to be a full-time grandmother, and while it's bittersweet for all of us, we applaud her choice and understand that this is her priority at this time. And we have to, we have to accept this resignation.
We're gonna make sure to prohibit Luli from retiring.
We're trying, I'm gonna put a, like, I'm gonna chain her, I don't know if Carlos has, and Pete, if you have anything that we can tie like a ball and chain and keep her here, or build a nursery, and, there we go, a shackle, or we can maybe make a nursery and keep the babies here with us while she works, I mean.
We should probably pull out all the stops and do whatever we all can do, joint effort.
I've tried, but, yeah. It's, it's, it's a difficult one, very difficult.
We're gonna pay her husband to change her mind.
So, the good thing is that Luli's only three, four blocks away, and she's not going anywhere, and I know that we will be able to rely on her institutional knowledge to walk us through our most difficult moments in the coming years, because it's not gonna be an overnight transition, I guarantee you. I don't care if we hire a rocket scientist, it's just that the value of the institutional knowledge of finding every bit of financial piece of information that this city has had for the last 37 years is going to be irreplaceable. That's what happens when all that knowledge walks out the door in one day. But we have discussed the need to find a replacement as soon as possible for the greater good of the city, and finding a suitable candidate is definitely not going to be an easy task, but a process that we should start on or about October 1st. And I'll issue a memorandum in writing in more detail on how we propose to advertise for a Finance Director candidate and the selection process, which I will, just for the sake of this meeting and for your information, Luli and I have spoken at great length with the auditor and amongst ourselves, and we believe that a selection committee should be in place, one that is comprised of Luli, my office, and our auditors, who are ultimately going to be working with transitioning or assisting even in transitioning from an audit perspective, a new candidate for the position. So, we will give you some more refined and defined or some timelines here, but I think that the moment is here, and now we should act upon it. I would like to seize the moment, and hopefully, we will have a good pool of candidates, and hopefully, the selection can be made, one that will be presented to you for your ratification, a recommendation for your ratification that somebody who will come in here and actually start working with Luli and the auditors, because the audit takes place late November, early December, we will be right smack in the middle of the audit process, and then it'll, it will probably slow down for the holidays, and then after the 10th of January or so, it'll kick up again. So, I would encourage for all of us to move forward with the announcement on October 1st, or as early as possible. That being said, that's the part that covers her, Luli's retirement. The revised 2020, excuse me, 2020, 2021 General Fund Tentative Budget totals $7,932,630. On the revenue side, we added the revenue coming in from the Need Streets Grant application, which totals $19,908, and this revenue increased the general fund budget by that amount, $19,908. So, in, with the exception of the grant, no other of our, no other of our revenue categories has decreased or increased. The revised 2020, 2021 General Fund expense detail includes the following changes. The first one is a $25,000 increase to our workers' compensation insurance, primarily due to the COVID-19 and rising claim costs in general. As you may know or remember, Miami-Dade County is our workers' compensation administrator, and we're part of a pool program as well. The $25,000 increase has been prorated to all departments so that they can share in the anticipated increase. So, you're gonna find a couple of your line items in the Police Department, and I think in the Streets Department, that we went ahead and shifted some of those costs to those departments that bear the brunt of the manpower in the city. The, that would decrease your anticipated reserves, and I'll leave that for last. I'd like to cover the fact that we're also planning for the attrition of the finance and administration budget for a candidate whom we would like to start, like I said earlier, as early as December 1st, or earlier if possible. So, we've put in an amount of $25,000 for salary and benefits to work with, hopefully, to get a candidate onboard and work with Mrs. Leon to start the attrition process. In addition to that, and as part of your budget exhibit, attached to the budget or in your budget book, there is an email from Mr. Penna dated August 24 that addresses the need to repair, replace several air conditioning units in our city facilities. We have two air conditioning units in the community center, and there is an estimate of replacement of about $15,000. These AC units run all the time, and they also run for weekends when we rent out for parties. Obviously, COVID has shut us down temporarily, but the fact is, is that this is an ongoing problem. We're servicing the unit, and the electrical costs are going up because they're not energy efficient. We also need to really replace the ones over the City Hall expansion. Again, the City Hall has had expansions over the years, and Mr. Penn advises that these units have come to the end of their lifespan. And again, the issue of servicing and the lack of inefficiency when it comes to paying the bills is going to force us to replace the units for an amount of $15,500 estimated cost. And again, the Recreation Center at the Rebecca Sosa Multipurpose Facility Building has a unit that is now 10 years old, and it's gone through a lot of wear, a lot of hours of operation, and it's going to require a change-out or replacement, if you would. So, these, all these items are addressed in the email dated August 24th from Mr. Penna, basically assessing the need to allocate the dollars in the budget. Again, we also included the expense from the Need Streets Tree Program. We're including on the expense side, the $19,908, plus the match from the city, which is for a project amount of $40,000. So, that has been identified in the, in the general fund budget. So, that triggers a decrease in the anticipated reserves for a total of, to a total of $315,273. That, the prior, at the, excuse me, at the... Give me one second so that I can... Okay. During our July 15th preliminary budget presentation, we had, I wanna say, was it 390 in reserves, 390 in reserves? Give me one second, Madam Mayor, if you would, so many papers in here. Yeah, I think so. Yeah. The preliminary budget had a reserve preliminary amount of $390,865. Because of the items that I just mentioned, those reserves will go down to $315,273. It leaves $100,000 for a Hurricane National Disaster Fund and/or a Phase 2 or Round 2 of the epidemic. It includes your community center transfers and the signs, the entrance signs. If we can ever overcome this COVID, we can start now addressing some of these city projects. So, that being said, none of the other line items were reduced. The only thing that we reduced was the, the reserve amounts. On the, on the issue of surtax, now we have the final projections that were submitted by Miami-Dade County during the month of August. And with freebie onboard, we may have to revisit the expenses as we move beyond the 90-day trial period to include additional driver hours and maybe days. Again, we will gauge our utilization every 30 days to check on our ridership. I think Mr. Penna submitted a report to us today. I have not been able to look at it in detail, but I did see that over the last two weeks, we had 67 riders. Am I correct, Mr. Penna? I believe completed trips is what they mentioned.
Correct.
Okay, so, it seems like it's, it's, you know, the word is getting out there, and I'm sure that it's, it's gonna get better. And again, advertisement will play a role with freebie vehicles, and it will lessen the amount that eventually the city would have to roll out to pay for their services, because they will give us the credit for the advertisement costs. And so, once the economy starts to bounce back, I foresee us being able to pick up additional hours and possibly expand our days to include Saturdays. On the Water Department Fund, we went ahead and made a minor change to the Water Department Enterprise Fund, but it's still going to leave you a small reserves of about $150,000. We have actually credited the Water Department as we are transferring Eliana, our Water Department Clerk, will be transferred to the Accounting Office. And little did we know that when we started to cross-train her that, that Luli was gonna make this decision. So, I think we had some kind of a little magic wand at the time that told us that the accounting staff was very overloaded, and they have been for a long time. So, our intent is to bring in Eliana and get her trained on payables, retirement contributions, banks, and put Rita more into, into a, I don't wanna call it a director's role, because she does not wanna be the Finance Director, but give her some of the major projects and take her away from the day-to-day activities of the deposit and all that so that we can run the Accounting Department a little bit more efficient. Not that it's not, it's actually one of the best-run Accounting Department that, in, in our 34 municipalities, but we just thought that making the change right now was a good idea. The Recreation Center Fund has a, actually, we decrease its projected reserves from the time that we submitted the budget on July 15th, and that is due to the imminent need to change out the large AC unit at the multipurpose facility. And the, again, the estimated cost for that AC to power, one of the ACs, because it has multiple ACs. So, one of these units has an estimated cost of about $20,000. Then, we go into the Community Center. If all goes well and we're able to reopen our center during next fiscal year with all the activities, as customary, the city will utilize all of the reserve funds in the Community Center that have not been spent this fiscal year and whatever they have in reserves to the tune of about $38,500 to cover some expected shortfalls. That includes the transfer of $227,000 from general funds. We thought about increasing the transfer by $40,000, but I believe that we have enough savings in other activities in that budget that can help us pay for the shortfalls that are expected for next fiscal year. And this doesn't necessarily affect the meals, it mostly affects activities, classes, the teachers, and all the other mandates as required by the Alliance for Aging that we have so that we can run the program to meet the goal of the program. So, again, the AC units at the Community Center is, is a costly item, and so, again, the anticipated cost is approximately $20,000 to change out those units. So, if these changes are approved by this commission this evening, that would conclude the changes that were made to the tentative budget since the last, the 1st of middle on July 15th. And this would be the budget that we would have to advertise on Sunday, September 20th, in the Miami Herald as part of the budget process. If I, if you all have any questions, and I wanna publicly thank you again for the time that you've taken to meet with me, to discuss the budget, to ask your questions, and even through the final stage, I will be here, make myself available at your convenience to discuss any further concerns that you may have. That concludes my presentation for now. One more thing, Madam Mayor, if I may. As you know, we're working with CARES, the CARES Act, and there's an issue of a 1% wage increase for police officers. And there was a final order from the State of Florida from the Public Employers Relation Commission, which we refer to as PERC. We have, tomorrow, the Major and the Chief, and I are going to put in a conference call to the Labor Attorneys at the Union so that they can walk us through the remaining, the balance of the process. If, in fact, the city has to pay out the $17,000, which is what we've estimated, the 1%, will cover the expenses associated with a 1% retrodated or backdated, starting to April 1st through November 30th, then I believe that at the final budget hearing, we will have to amend the budget to increase the money coming, coming in from CARES and the expense on the Police Department side for this college short-term differential. But we cannot do it now because we don't have a vote by the membership, am I correct, Chief Avila?
Yes, ma'am, and I think we have a deadline of September, September 15th.
Correct. Well, we have a deadline for September 15th to upload it to the CARES portal. We've already uploaded it. I believe that what needs to take place now is after our conversation tomorrow, get an expectation from the PBA as to when that vote will take place and when they expect, you know, for, to submit their requisition. Now, the one thing that obviously I want to be very, very sure about is if we pay this money out, if, if we pay this money out, I want to be 100% certain that the city will be reimbursed for the $17,000. And the Chief knows this, the Major knows this. So, that's going to be our message, that we're gonna be reimbursed either by CARES, by FEMA, or by both. And that would conclude any changes as I see them today.
Madam Manager, let me ask you, all that 1% for the Police Department, you don't need anything else from us, correct? And that involves, that involves that you, the Chief, and the, and the department, and whatever else, but you need nothing else from us?
Yes, I do, we need to get approved. If, and I'll know tomorrow, as soon as they take this to the, to the commission, we may need to call a special meeting before the 15th to address the issue of a memorandum of understanding between the City of West Miami and the Police Benevolent Association. That may require a vote of the commission.
Why could, why could we not just give you that vote, or take that vote now? That way, you have everything you need to get this done? Or do we have to wait until after you have it?
I would like, I would like to have a final MOU drafted because the, the final order was, just came in on Friday afternoon. The 1% is pensionable, and I suspected that it would be pension-
No, it is not, it is not pensionable, according to, to what I read there, it is not pensionable.
But according to the FRS, it is pensionable. I spoke to Andrew Axelrod last week, the- But according to the FRS, it is pensionable. I spoke to Andrew Axelrod last week, the Council for PBA. So there are some glitches still that have to be worked out. That's why I wanna reach out to them again tomorrow. There are some glitches and FRS is saying that it is pensionable.
Okay, we'll let you all work all that out and then come to us with your memorandum, memorandum of understanding. Let me know right away when you need me to call the meeting. And I'll call it so that we can get this taken care of as quickly as possible for you.
Yes, ma'am. That would conclude everything I have up to, up to today.
Thank you for your very comprehensive report. Are there any questions or comments for the manager on her message? I do have a comment, if I may, for Mr. Penna. How did you manage to kill all air conditioners at the same time? I, I, I'm a little, I'm a little lost. How is it every, you managed to kill? It might be a good thing, you know, might, we might, we get some sort of, you know, a discount because we have to replace every air conditioner on city property? So maybe it's a good thing, you know, go for, for a discount, maybe?
Touching the top of the cream. We've, that only includes four AC units. We have over twenty.
Okay, I just, city hall, rec, community center?
No money for many years, you just kick the can down the line.
I understood. I, I just had to ask the question. I, I thought that was, that was really good, really good. All right, so with that said, if there are no questions for the manager or staff on her message, Madam Clerk, if you will read the resolution, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item four B. Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, establishing the twenty-twenty tentative milage rates upon all real and personal property within the city limits for the payments of the amount appropriated in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one tentative budget.
I need a motion?
Motion?
Well, there's, there's no, hold on. Do this every time. There's no, there has to be a reset.
The rate is as proposed on July fifteenth. We maintain the milage rates, for the general fund stays at five point eight eight five eight and one mil appropriated to our Parks and Recreation Center as provided by ordinance one thirty-three of the city's Code of Ordinances. For a total of six point eight eight five eight milage rate.
So as usual, I'd like to make an alternative or, or a motion, or alternative milage rate, like we discussed in the past. And I understand the administrative position and that is so my colleagues. However, I still think it's time to get back to the residents and that at least residents with homestead exemptions should not pay more in taxes than they paid last year. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for combined milage rate of six point six four four eight, which is a half point, which is a half percent higher milage than I proposed back in July. But for a six point six four four eight milage rate for tentative milage, that's the motion I would like to make.
How much is, again, what would be the milage rate?
Six point six four four eight, a three point five percent reduction from our current milage.
Six point six four eight?
Six point, six point six four four eight.
Four four eight.
Upon hearing no second to Vice Mayor's friendly amendment, we will go with Commissioner Blanca's motion. Do I have a second to Commissioner Blanca's motion?
Second.
I have a first, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
I apologize, who's second the motion?
Commissioner Blanes.
Okay.
He was second, he was seconding Commissioner Blanca's.
Okay. So can I call the vote, Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, please.
How do you vote?
Anari, I'm sorry, you broke up.
Who did you call, Anari? You broke up.
Okay, Commissioner Suarez. How do you vote?
He's unmuted. Commissioner Suarez. I'm not sure if he can hear us and he, he is not muted, but I
This is, is this in reference to which one, which motion?
Your motion, Commissioner Blanca, your motion. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
But I don't know if he can hear us because Commissioner Suarez, if you can hear us, can you shake your head? Yes? See, I'm not sure if he can hear us.
Hello, are you here?
Yes, yes, you're here, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
I cannot see you. I have a picture in the, in the, in the computer.
Okay, we heard, we, we got your vote, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
My emotion, yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
No.
No? And Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes, four, one, item passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item?
Next item is item four C, Resolution of the City of West Miami, adopting the twenty-twenty, twenty-one tentative budget.
I need a motion?
Motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Call the vote?
Yes. Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes, can you hear me? I don't see picture here.
Yeah, yes, sir, we can hear you.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
No.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four, one, item passes.
Thank you. If I may, Commissioner Suarez, you, you might not be able to see us, but we can see you and we can hear you. Okay?
I don't see any-
I, I know and I realize that, but I just wanted to know, we, I see you and we can hear you. So, so don't worry, we've got you. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item four D, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, adopting the tentative Water Enterprise Fund budget for the year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one in the sum of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand forty-three dollars and zero cents.
Madam Mayor, if I may, before you start the process of voting, Anari broke up again and we need to enter these amounts into the record very clear.
Madam Clerk, read that resolution once more, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, adopting the tentative Water Enterprise Fund budget for the year twenty-twenty-one in the sum of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand forty-three dollars and zero cents.
No, no, I'm sorry. There's, there needs to be a correction. The revised budget water, for the water revenue and expense fund is seven hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Anari, you should have a revise.
Okay, I, I mean, I corrected it. It's being corrected for the record, seven seven hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars and zero cents.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I need a motion?
Motion?
Thank you, and a second. Thank you. Call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item, good of the order. Does anyone have anything for the good of the order?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, sir.
I reported previously that the hearing for the RITR filed by Banium was scheduled for October first. Now we learned that that schedule is not in the docket. So therefore, they're still pending for the court to put it in the docket for any time in the future.
Thank you. And Mr. Attorney, please be sure to let us know because I want to, I want to watch that meeting. So as soon as you are made aware of the new date, be sure to let us know, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else for the good of the order? I have a couple of things. The first thing I, I see, I wanna welcome our newest code enforcement alternate board member, Jerry Diaz. I see he joined us midway. Good afternoon, Jerry. Thank you for being here.
Hi, good afternoon.
Thank you for being here. I don't think you've had a meeting yet, have you? No, right? There's been no meetings?
No, this is the first meeting I am attending.
Wonderful. It's a pleasure to see you. I hope to see you more often. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. The next thing I'd like to say is, once again, as always, I wanna thank our manager, our finance director, everyone, my colleagues who, who took the time to meet with the manager, the finance director and go over the budget. I know this is, this is our most important document. And I am, I am pleased and happy with the time that, that staff has spent on preparing it. It's a great budget and I'm very happy that we all gave it the importance and, and the time that it deserves and the respect that it deserves. So thank you all. Once again, this is a time of, a time of the year where the rubber meets the road and and we've passed a, a great budget. So thank you to all who participated and had, had anything and everything to do with this budget. Anybody else? Okay, well then, I want to wish everyone a great afternoon. Have a wonderful evening. Let's go out on a positive note. Stay happy, stay healthy. And I hope to see you all in person very soon. I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
This meeting is adjourned. Have a great afternoon, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.